Hello, everybody. I am calling the Monday, April 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order here at 6:30 PM. Tonight's meeting is being held in person and also virtually by using Zoom. As Chair, I'll be leading the meeting, and the public will be welcome to participate when invited. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or via online Zoom. If attendees online experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. Additional instructions on how to participate online are posted on our website, www.burnsville.gov, in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and you'd like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly here to City Hall. So, the Zoom instructions for participating online are go to zoom.us/join and type in our meeting ID, which is 815-8379-9688. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also phone into the meeting at 651-372-8299. It is the same meeting ID, 815-8379-9688. For each of our public hearings, I'll open up a time when callers may speak, and we'll give you more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until it's time for you to speak. Please know that there might be a slight delay due to differences in technology, and if you're speaking by phone, please mute your computer since that may be confusing with the delay. Okay, those are our instructions. Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from staff?
No changes.
No changes from staff? Any changes from the commissioners? No changes from the commissioners. Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Commissioner Braddock?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
And a second by Commissioner John.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item is approval of our minutes from our last meeting on March 11th, 2024. Are there any changes to the minutes from staff?
No changes.
Any changes to the minutes from commissioners? Seeing none, I'll entertain another motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Moved it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're onto our third item. This is a public hearing. This is the application of CSM Park Place LP for a planned unit development amendment to add a second drive-through lane and construct a new canopy structure on the Chick Filet Restaurant located at 1200 County Road 42. Presenting Ms. Garros, planner.
Thank you, Commissioners and members of the public. We did get a request late this afternoon from the applicant that they wished the public hearing to be opened and then continued to your next meeting, which is April 22nd, to allow them some additional time to take a look at their plans and consider some modifications. And we advised that we would let the Planning Commission know that. And so the first item is a request then to continue this public hearing to your April 22nd meeting.
Okay, so do we open the public hearing and then just leave it open until the next meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
And no presentation, staff presentation until our next meeting?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing at 6:34 on this matter, CSM Park Place application. And do I need a motion to continue?
Yes.
Then I would love to have a motion to continue. Commissioner John.
I would like to make a motion to continue this to a further meeting when the applicant is ready.
Excellent. Yep. Sounds right. Okay, sounds right, and we'll have a second.
Second.
Seconded by everybody. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four on our agenda. This is a public hearing, the application of Richard McGowan for an interim use permit to continue operating the Chalet Golf Driving Range located at 11937 Interstate 35W. Presenting Kevin Trushinsky, Community Development Assistant.
Thank you, Chair. Before you tonight is an application of Richard McGowan for an interim use permit to continue operating the Chalet Golf Driving Range, and that's off of Interstate 35W, 11937 Interstate 35W. The site is about 27 and 1/2 acres, and it is currently unplatted. Normally with our land use applications, we do require plating, but since this is an interim use, we will not require plating at this time, and that will wait until they come forward for a more permanent development in the future. So the site itself, this is the freeway dump site, and the driving range was originally approved as an interim use at this site in 1994, and it has received additional interim use approvals in 2005 and 2013. You'll notice in the photo here, directly to the west of the site is a city trail, which was constructed in 1996, and to the north of it has recently received some improvements that you may recall came through here within the last couple of years, and there has been a new connection to Bloomington across the bridge over the river. So that's the site area here. The zoning of the site is the B4 Gateway, Highway Commercial Gateway District. It is guided for business, retail, and office uses in the 2040 comp plan. The surrounding uses are commercial and industrial primarily, and then natural conservancy to the north. And the site is also part of some environmental overlay districts, including the drinking water protection overlay, the wetland overlay, and portions of the site are in the floodplain of the Minnesota River. So I wanted to kind of give you some context on this interim use permit at the site. So in 1993, this was the site plan that was submitted to the city, and this is the plan that the site has been operating under through the duration of the time that it's been operating here. So it's a pretty similar layout to what will be coming before you tonight. I should note on this plan here, it calls out, there's some light posts that are along the western edge here that were originally allowed to be constructed for the use of having protective netting, which is also called out on this site plan here. And there's some other lighting back in here, but otherwise, the site is pretty much the same as it is today. So their proposal today is very, very similar to that. However, they're proposing a plan that does not include netting or lighting on the site. So the existing conditions, there are lights on top of many of those poles along the western edge and the southern edge of the site, and there is currently no netting installed along the edge there. Their previous interim use permits do require the netting along the side there, but I just wanted to point out the differences between the historical approvals versus what they are proposing today. So some staff considerations. We took a look at this plan with the Development Review Committee, made up of all the staff reviewers, and it is the DRC's recommendation that netting be installed for public safety along that western side there. This is primarily due to the proximity of the site to that bike trail and to the interstate. With the newly opened connection to Bloomington, there's increased access to the trail for more users, so we feel that it's even more relevant right now than it always could have been. Netting has always been a requirement of their interim use, so it's nothing new that we're requiring as a result of this application. The netting, the protective netting was the reason that the city allowed for the construction of those light poles in the first place on the western side of the property. In the historical context of that, we were looking at minimal disturbance to the site in the first place, so by allowing those light poles to be constructed at all, that was a disturbance to the site, and we allowed that for the purpose of that protective netting. And then it really is common practice among other golf users in the, along the interstate or in other urban areas to have protective netting, so it's very in line with other types of uses like that. Other considerations, so we do see this driving range as an amenity to the community, and it allows for good use of this land without a permanent improvement at this time. So in the past, the requirements for concrete curbing, the construction of a permanent building, and the installation of the footings for the light poles and tree plantings on site, those were waived by the city council due to the unique nature of the site as a landfill. With that, the dirt cover cannot be pierced to try and help eliminate any potential environmental impacts to the site, so that's why there's a unique situation there that has allowed the city council to waive those requirements in the past approvals, so we'll continue to allow that as is. The city will require an electrical permit for the abandonment of the lighting on site. This is just to ensure that any wiring that's associated with those lights is abandoned in a safe manner that won't cause any safety issues for people nearby or for anything in the area. And then I should note that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency did provide comments on this project, and our city's engineering department has reviewed the letter and agrees to partner with the applicant to identify some best management practices. And overall, staff is supportive of this project. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of the interim use permit to allow the continued use of the Chalet Golf Driving Range, subject to the following conditions. We're recommending that the conditions of previously approved IUPs shall remain in full force and effect. The termination date will be December 31st of 2033, so a 10-year permit, which is in line with the other IUPs that you've seen in the last couple of years, so very in line with the other uses in that area at the time. We're including a condition that netting shall be installed on the existing poles along the western edge of the driving range prior to opening for the 2024 season, and they shall remain in place through the duration of this IUP. And the application shall apply for an electrical permit with the city of Burnsville by June 1st of this year or before operations begin for the 2024 season, whichever is earlier, for the abandonment of lighting on site. The existing lights on site shall be disconnected from power, and no overhead lighting is to be utilized on site without providing a photometric plan and light fixture details just to demonstrate that the lighting meets the ordinance and that the property owner is aware that the comprehensive plan identifies future right-of-way may be needed for a new interchange along I-35W. That's a similar condition that we have included on other MRQ projects lately. There's a map that's in your background reports that illustrates where that interchange will potentially be. It's not planned at the time, but if there is one to come in the future, that's where it would be, and this condition just acknowledges that the applicant is aware of that. No additional signage shall be installed prior to the issuance of a sign permit. The applicant is responsible for satisfying the comments of any external reviewing agency and to obtain all required permits, and the applicant shall submit to the city engineer the studies conducted by BAR Engineering, which are referenced in their narrative letter. With that, this is a public hearing tonight, and I can stand for any questions.
Thank you for an excellent report, Mr. Trushinsky. Any questions from Commissioners? And we also have, before I open it up, we also have Commissioner Timmerman on Zoom, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Chair.
Okay, I'll let you know when you get to speak. How's that?
Very good. I will have a couple of questions for Kevin here, but I can wait.
Okay. I think Commissioner John, you're first.
Yeah. When I read through this, 2033 threw me off, I was like, man, that's got to be a mistype, but 2033, that's crazy. 10 years, that makes sense. Anyway, my first question is on, you said that netting had been, had always been required, but it has never been installed? Or I'm trying to think of a time when there was netting over there.
Yeah.
What makes us think the applicant is going to put netting up now if they hadn't in the past?
So in all of the previous approval reports, it acknowledges that the netting will remain in place, so it tells me that the netting was there in the past and that it no longer is there, so.
Maybe I never saw it, maybe it was there, I don't know. But it's a place you pass by quite often because it's right off the freeway as it is. And then there was another question I had as far as, for, as far as maintenance and upkeep, we talked about working with the city engineer on what needs to occur, what needs to happen to ensure that water doesn't penetrate into the drinking water.
Yeah, I'll refer that to our engineering consultant.
Yeah, thank you. We are, we are just going to support whatever the MPCA is requiring of them. They provided that letter, as we mentioned, and then any other requirements that they have prior to approving anything for this. But the city will work with the applicant and help them in any way we can to move forward, any BMPs that they may need to install.
Okay, and you're not aware of anything at the moment that...
Not any specific requirements, no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
My question was, the existing poles that are on the site, are they sufficient so that the MPCA doesn't feel it penetrates, those penetrate this surface?
Yeah, so in the MPCA's comment letter, they said that they do not know how the poles were constructed, so they aren't able to comment on the quality of the construction at this point. I do know that the poles were allowed to be constructed without footings at the time, whereas we would require footings for poles of that nature elsewhere, and this was to try and mitigate any of those issues that the penetration would have caused at the time, so that it was taken into consideration when we allowed these poles to be constructed.
But at this time, there's no requirement that they put the poles in with footings?
Correct.
Any other questions from Commissioners before I hand it over to Commissioner Timmerman? I have a question. So condition number eight, the applicant is responsible for satisfying the comments of any external reviewing agency and to obtain all required permits. What are some examples of those? MPCA would be one of those. Are there other external agencies that may be wanting to review this?
Yeah, so we send it to, we send it to MINDA, we send it to MPCA, and any of these external agencies are allowed to make comments. We aren't responsible for enforcing their rules. We're just allowing them to see these applications and provide their comments, so if there is any permitting that would be required of any of these agencies, this condition just would ensure that we're doing what we can to help aid in that process, but we're ultimately not responsible for enforcing these external agencies' rules.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Timmerman?
Yes, thank you. So Kevin, I'm looking at the letter that MPCA sent back to the applicant, and their letter was addressed to Richard McGowan dated March 6th. And in that letter, it says that the driving range is sited on top of a former waste disposal area, which is classified as a priority qualified facility in the MPCA's closed landfill program. It goes on to say that the site is the drinking water overlay, which I know you've covered, and that we need to be cautious to prevent infiltration. Now, I've got a number of questions related to this site with this designation that MPCA has planned out. The first one, though, is still coming from the letter, and that's talking about infiltration, and one of the comments that they made was about the light poles, but they went on to say that there is evidence that the driving range area has been irrigated in the past, which would increase the amount of infiltration through the waste in the dump into the groundwater, which directly moves into our drinking water source. So I have a lot of environmental concerns about this property. We know that this particular dump is unlined. We know that there have been years of discussion between the city of Burnsville, the property owner, MPCA, Department of Health, and I'm looking, Kevin, for an update on what those remediation efforts are on this property, and then also you can address the irrigation issue, because I do not see that as a recommendation on the, on staff's recommendation list here.
Yeah, so in regards to irrigation, the applicant did respond to that comment. They provided me an updated narrative letter where they stated that they only irrigate as needed, and they do that minimally to not overly saturate the ground. I can let the applicant speak to that more if you want to hear more about their irrigation practices, but that's what they've provided to me. As far as any other mitigation efforts, I would also have to let the applicant speak to that as far as what they're doing to try and help out in that environmental concern area. Does engineering have any other comments regarding the environmental mitigation?
No, not at this time. We aren't working with the applicant to do anything specifically, so.
Deb, you have something?
If I could.
Yes.
As far as the MPCA, they are still working on mitigation for both this site and then the freeway landfill, which is on the west side of the freeway. So they are still looking at the same options that have been under consideration for several years now. Basically, they would remediate by digging out all of the trash from this site, and then also all of the trash from the freeway landfill site, and the options would be then to either move the landfill further to the east, dig a new hole basically, line it, and then put all of the garbage in that, in that space. They could also be looking at dig and haul operation where the waste could be dug up from both sites and then taken off-site to a waste facility that can accept the type of materials that would be found in that. So those are still the mitigation strategies. There's not been really any changes to that that staff is aware of. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hamilton.
So regarding the MPCA, are they viewing the cleanup as separate projects, or are they viewing it as one combined project, west side of 35 and east side of 35 as one project? And...
I believe they're looking at it as one entire project.
So because they're looking at it from a totality, would that impact Chalet in moving forward?
I don't believe so. They are requesting an interim use permit, and the property owner needs to be working with MPCA for anything that would happen out there, probably because the Kramer Quarry is going to continue operating, you know, for another 20, 30, 40 years. The timeframe for the cleanup is probably not as, I guess it's not as high of a priority, because as long as there is quarrying going on, the groundwater is kept low, it doesn't get to the point of the freeway dump site. So that's basically my understanding of it, and the applicant would need to work with MPCA most definitely, should they come forward with a scenario to build on there. For this particular use, the reason that staff has been supportive of it is because really it's, there's very little impact to the property. They're not constructing anything new, they won't be putting in any new footings, any of that type of thing, and they're basically just, you know, it's just golfing, which is about, I don't know if there is another use out there that you could do, but this is, you know, one of the, one of the few, and that's why the city has supported it through the years.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Hamilton?
Regarding the netting, if the netting has never taken place, or as far as the city knows, is there an enforcement mechanism this go-around to ensure that they do put the netting in?
Yeah, so ultimately, if it's a condition of their interim use permit, then they are responsible for following that, and we do have a code enforcement process that it could go through if they aren't complying with the conditions of their approval.
There is also a specific date listed in the conditions that are being proposed, that that netting be installed prior to their opening for the 2024 season and then remain open, so that's, there's a deadline date in which to have it up and keep it up.
I have a question. What triggered the re-upping of this interim use permit? Did the previous interim use permit expire?
Yes, at the end of last year.
At the end of last year, that's where we are. Okay, thank you. I think at this point, we'll open up a public hearing at 6:57, and if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item, you're welcome to step up to the podium and identify yourself and your address. We'll also open it up to people on Zoom once we're done in the room here. Hi, if you could state your name and your address.
Sorry, I don't know if the mic works. My name's Richard McGowan. And I apologize in advance if my etiquette isn't polished. This is my first time at one of these meetings. But yes, my name is Richard McGowan, I submitted the application.
Welcome, and your address for the public record?
That's a, I don't even know it off the top of my head. Are we talking for Chalet?
No, for your home address.
Oh, cool. 225 Second Street Southeast, Minneapolis.
Okay. And are you, do you have comments or something you want to share, or are you just here to answer questions?
I was just here to answer questions. I could speak to irrigation briefly. They actually asked me before the meeting how many times I've turned it on, and I said I think I maybe turned it on once last summer, so we don't, we don't turn it on very much, but that was the only thing I saw in the last couple of minutes that I figured I would mention, so if there's anything else, I'll be happy to answer.
How do you feel about netting? There's a lot of talk about netting, so...
I know it, yeah. When that was mentioned, I was a little surprised, because I was born in 95, and to my recollection, it's never been up in my lifetime, but, I mean, it won't be that tough to put up, so I'll get a, I'll get a lift and get up there with some, some attachment materials and get it up, so I'm not too worried about it. We'll, we'll have it up and ready before we open.
So you're not opposed to installing netting?
I can't be, because I can't open until I put it up, so.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Regarding the netting, are there particular requirements in height or type of material that's required?
In the past, the plans have required it be the nylon netting. In the past, the plans have required it be the nylon netting, but we would allow, we would work with them to identify what kind of netting would be suitable for the needs.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner John?
Yeah, I was just curious on, in the letter, we talked about the mitigation or the dump, the mediation, thank you. Are you opposed to working with the MPCAs or what is the plan on that? Have you spoke with them at all?
We've had multiple meetings with the MPCA. I have an engineer with me who might be able to speak to that a little better than I can, but we have met with the MPCA frequently recently, in the recent months, and then in, I mean, in the last 13, 14 years, a lot. So we do, we're in fairly frequent communication with them, and going forward, I assume that will be consistent.
As far as the mitigation efforts with the open of the, of the Gulf, would that be in conflict at all with the driving range, excuse me?
No, it shouldn't. I mean, like, like Mrs. Garrett said, if, if the MPCA comes to us and, and requires us to do something, then we would do it, you know. But as she also mentioned, the Kramer Quarry won't stop de-watering for a while, so I'm, I mean, we can probably golf for a little while longer.
Yeah.
Commissioner Timmerman, are you still online? Do you have a question for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to put on my camera here, show you maybe my sister's cap back there, but I appreciate the flexibility here to join and provide some comments from all the states while I'm working. The, the questions I have for the applicant are around what the city council looked at, I believe, last week, maybe the week before in a special hearing that they had, or a special meeting that they had to discuss this property, future potential economic benefits both to the applicant as well as some benefits that could be long-term for the city. Mr. McGowan, you speak to some of the ideas or some of the projects that you have in mind for this property? And then can you give us an idea of what those hurdles are that you need to go through and realize some of those ideas?
Absolutely, I can speak to it. Would you guys like, like to? John, John, this is John Hink, engineer.
My name is John Hink, 5644 Emerson Avenue, South Minneapolis, Minnesota, and I'm an engineering consultant for the landowner. With regard to the interim use permit for chalet golf, the remedial action remains unchanged. The existing cap is stable and will not be, and it remains protective of human health and the environment. With regard to any proposed future use, which is what we're talking about with the sketch plan, that it really has nothing to do with the interim use permit of chalet golf. And, and in that case, all of those conditions would, are being negotiated with the MPCA. We're meeting with them regularly. But that's a, an issue with regard to, that would also be tied to Kramer's shutting off their pump, which is still licensed for another 30, 40 years. So whatever that future use would be is still undeveloped, but is, would likely come back before the planning commission, the city council, at a much later date when negotiations with the MPCA with regard to a future remedial action and then the landowners propose intended new use.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, Wad, I'm just curious, what is that future new use that was discussed with the city council?
I can answer that question. Mike Zipko, another consultant with the project, N 5831, 1000 St., Ellsworth, Wisconsin. And thanks for having me here. The current plan is to work with the city to create a multi-use entertainment facility on the site that's engineered to take advantage of the environmental situation at the location. It would include a year-round operational facility called Sweet Shot, which will have golf and sports simulators. There'll also be indoor and outdoor pickleball courts. There'll be an event space inside the facility of close to, up to 400 people that'll allow community events to be held there. The idea is to create a year-round activity center that'll be busy for all ages, 365 days a year. Some of the simulation activities include everything from soccer, hockey, football. So it allows the ability to engage a broad range of the community. The idea is then also have the pickleball facility be something that can operate year round and have outdoor courts that, again, engages others. We've had letters of support from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, from the Chamber of Commerce. We've had other productive meetings with the agency. We're having productive conversations with the MPCA and talking to other folks involved, working very, very hard. The direction from the city council and the mayor was for our, us and our team to work with all the, the agencies that have permitting and review over this, for us to get our work done and then come back to the city of Burnsville with all of our permissions secured and say, and bring the plans to them there. The other part of this project would be the operators of Sweet Shots would have, you know, the ability to raise, do fundraisers for community events. Part of the reason why the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Chamber are very supportive is it gives them a place to program, and it's a collaborative use connected to the Ames Center and things like that. It's another use that would be compatible to other things going on in Burnsville. So we're, we have a lot of work to do, but that's the broader use here. Again, that's separate from the chalet driving range, but we are working very closely with as many stakeholders as we can, and we will continue to come forward and as, share updates as we work through this. But I think the idea that having support from the council and from the other stakeholders in Burnsville, I think matters. It shows we've worked really hard and we're going to continue to carry on that kind of work.
Commissioner Wad?
Assume this new development might pierce the cover of the landfill, or is there room to build these facilities next to the landfill?
The site is being designed to take into account, basically, it'll end up, it'll be a sealed cover over the, you know, the way the Sweet Shot project works, it's different than Topgolf. There's no holes in the cover. It'll basically be a cover over the, the waste that's there, designed with some water management systems in place. So there will be no holes. It'll actually be a better way to seal and contain this and to make sure there'll be a water management program in place. So as it rains, the water will be able to be managed through holding ponds and treated to actually increase the ability to mitigate environmental issues.
But will the buildings themselves that are proposed be on the, off the landfill or part of the landfill?
Yeah, the, the, the buildings will be mold, kind of straddling the edge of the landfill. But the way the facility works is it's, it's built from the existing surface and up. So it, we're not, yeah, we're not digging down at all. We'd be building up. For instance, the whole play area is about three feet elevation. So we'd add additional cover, and that additional cover is, is 100% impervious. It's a, like sport turf liner, the way, you know, like football fields are. So it's, and then any surface water is then shed off by gravity. We collect it, put it in a stormwater treatment pond, and then it would be discharged from the site after it's pretreated on the site.
So you're, what you're, and what you're talking about is developing on top of the existing landfill and, so there wouldn't be any remediation of the landfill with that, the type of development you're kind of talking about, which sounds really cool, by the way.
Well, and the other thing, too, and I think, and we can also provide this to you, to the members of the commission here, too. We've developed some information. If you look at a number of sites surrounding this area in the Twin Cities, there are a number of brownfield sites that have been remediated and reused without having the waste be dug up and moved. There are a number of these sites where it's been very successfully done. This site is less onerous than some of the other ones that have already been successfully redeveloped. We're building on best practices from these other locations and also have had, you know, good conversations and looking at ways to do this, considering, you know, the status of the site. And also, the other reality, too, is there are limited resources related to these kinds of projects from the state of Minnesota. So is there a way for them to still address the health and human concerns and also fiscally be, you know, able to put resources to other sites that may have a more pressing environmental need? And in this case, looking at other sites around here that have been very successfully redeveloped, that have been far more polluted. So we think there's a good model here, looking at best practices. And also, it kind of, it does change the conversation related to dig and haul, dig and move, where the focus after, you know, if this, everything moves forward here, there can be a more specific focus on the freeway landfill site, since this site will have been remediated and redeveloped. It would allow for a much more focused conversation as to the landfill site, which might make it a different conversation and be more focused. Our goal is to go, look at this as phase one, and phase one is to find some way to bring this site back to life and create something that's great for everybody involved, for the community, and also obviously for the landowner, but to create something that people are excited about and also takes into account a way to deal with some of these challenges that have been here for a number of years.
I appreciate you sharing in kind of the future plans of this site and, and even though this, what you're talking about isn't directly affected by this interim use permit. So I appreciate you kind of painting a picture of what's planned in the future.
Oh, thank you. And we, yeah, as I said before, we view this as a lot of ongoing conversations. We want to be as collaborative as possible. There's a great, this is really exciting, the response we've had back from people. To be honest, the pickleball courts have been the thing that's had the most response that we've received from people, which is, I think, a kind of a current trend right now. But I think the idea of having something that could happen there all year long, I think is really exciting to people. And in the short term, still a place to go hit golf balls in the meantime. But the site that we're talking about doing, the project that we're looking at, is far more than just golf. The idea, it's year-round entertainment for a broad range of folks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Timmerman, you look like you, do you have another question?
I'm not going to ask any follow-up questions. I'll say the conversation, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions for the applicants? And then similarly, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this matter? Anyone on, anyone else on Zoom? Usually, Mr. Trisinski, I'm looking to you for that sort of information.
I don't see anybody else on.
Okay. So Commissioner Anderson?
When do you look prepared to open the driving range this year?
I suppose once I get the netting up. It's a little windy and cold right now, but I'll, I'll rent a lift and get it up, and we'll see, I don't know. On a 40-degree rainy day, I wasn't really thinking about doing it, so hopefully soon.
Thank you. So I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:11 PM, and then we'll move this to discussion from amongst the commissioners. Any comments or discussion? Commissioner Timmerman?
I do have some comments. No matter what, what way you look at this, this is the literal definition, okay, figurative of putting lipstick on a pig. I mean, we are talking about a, a closed landfill. We're talking about a closed landfill that has no lining, that is as close to our drinking water source as, as can be. It's adjacent to the Minnesota River. As Kevin talked about, it has many overlay districts that need to be considered here. I have strong concerns about this property. I have strong concerns that there is more that could be done. I have strong concerns that taxpayers are going to be on the hook for remediating this property, along with other properties similar to it in my area. And I have strong concerns that the applicant will continue to gain financially through the operation of chalet golf. There has been demonstrated lack of commitment to the conditions in their existing or now expired interim use permit. I personally don't support this IP. I think that for the applicant to say that this project is unrelated to the future project or to the future remediation of this site is not forthright with people in retrospect. And I think that what we need to really do here is think about the fact that we are all going to participate in paying for the remediation of the landfill while this property owner continues to have their interim use permit that, again, has not been followed to the T as it was established in the 90s and renewed twice since then. So for those reasons, I'm not supportive of this application. Tonight, I don't have the opportunity to vote because I am not physically on site. But I did want to make sure to share my, my thoughts. And Chair Wad, thank you for the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Other comments from commissioners or motion? Commissioner John?
I, too, have reservations about the water source, the landfills in general, ensuring that we do have clean drinking water. It's very important. It's, it's probably the number one resource we have. I think these landfills do need to be cleaned up. Obviously, that's not the, what we're talking about today. We're talking about the driving range, which, which is, which is a good use for the land, as is right now, however. And I'm assuming that Richard is taking over from someone else that, whether it be a father or an uncle or something along those lines. So I do feel like there's a little bit of new ownership, and I'm hoping that with that new ownership, that we'd be able to work a little bit closer in getting this thing cleaned up. I think that's very important for the city of Burnsville, city of Savage, that do share drinking water sources. I know, I know that we're waiting on the quarry to close down the pumping operations, but if that does happen early, or the pumps stop working, now all of a sudden, our water is contaminated. And so why not be able to clean it up when we do have the opportunity? And I'm by far not an engineer, but that would, that's what really is my driving fear on any of these projects.
Commissioner Hamilton?
The driving range has been there, and all we're asking is for them to add the netting to deal with the electrical issue. There's no change to the driving range specifically. So we usually look at the driving range as mutually exclusive compared to future developments, which stands on its own there. When it comes for the future development, that's a totally different conversation in what they need to do to secure the drinking water and clean up the site. That is not the conversation tonight. Tonight is, will the applicant comply with the request of netting of the electrical? And as long as the applicant agrees to that and complies with that, I don't have an issue with it, you know, and we'll deal with future development down the road.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Mr. McGowan, would you be willing to not water on the driving range at all?
We could try it, see how it goes. I mean, it's definitely worth a shot.
Is that a yes or a no?
I would say yes.
Does that answer your question?
That answers my question.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion then.
Oh, please do.
I move that we approve the interim use permit with the requirements as outlined here, plus one year, no watering.
So you'd like, you'd like to add?
Yes, one year, no watering.
So that would be condition number 10, no watering.
For at least one year.
For, for one year. Okay, so there is a motion on the table. Is there any discussion, any?
Second?
Or a, or a second?
Oh, second.
Motion is, motion's been made and has been seconded. Again, it's the, the recommendation is written with added condition number 10, no watering for one year. I'm going to call it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So the motion.
Three.
Three to two.
Three to two.
Yeah, the motion is three to two. Which means it passes?
Yes.
Okay. So this will be before the city council?
May 7th.
City council meeting on May 7th. Yeah, thank you, everybody. We're on to our next item on our agenda. This is number five, updates. Do we have any updates from, I'm going to start with commissioners. Any updates from commissioners? Give staff a chance to get back in their seat. Give staff a chance to get back in their seat. No updates from commissioners? Any updates from staff?
We do have a couple. We do have applications that have come in, probably six or eight. So, so the days of canceled meetings hopefully are, are done. So yeah, we'll, we'll be able to see more of each other here.
Exciting.
Yeah. Sorry, sorry, or it's a good thing, however, however you may take it. And then the position for a planning manager has been published. So that would be a new position in the planning department. And that was published, I believe, Friday? Friday, yep. Went out. So the application will stay out there until they get applicants and start doing interviews. And so that's a very good thing, starting to get back at replacing some of the personnel that we've been without for, for quite a while now. So other than that, if you want to view the information regarding the proposal for the landfill that they brought, it was at the last city council work session meeting. So you can just pull that up and, and see that it's, it is, it's kind of an interesting, you know, concept, so. And I think, unless Kevin, do you have anything else or other staff?
Okay, super, thank you. Our next item on our agenda, number six, is adjournment. I would love to entertain a motion from one of the commissioners. Commissioner John?
A motion to adjourn.
Commissioner, and second, Commissioner Anderson. We, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.